To the special meeting budget workshop, the Board of Trustees on this Thursday, May 14th, 2015. Even though it doesn't look like it, believe it or not, we do have a quorum present. Trustee Graves is here with us in person, as well as myself, Chairman Benyon. We have trustee Baker on the phone, as well as trustee Clayton. So, with that...
That was Rob, I'm great then.
Gotcha.
Okay. Are there any additions, corrections, modifications, or substitutions to the current agenda?
I would like to make an addition. And that would be to add a discussion regarding the strategic plan survey that we discussed on Tuesday, so that we can get more consensus moving forward.
Are you talking about adding that after the budget presentation, so we can take care of the matters at hand first?
Absolutely, that would be fine.
Okay. So, I've heard a motion to make the addition of the strategic plan survey for the Board, a discussion-action item. Did I hear discussion or discussion-action?
I think it would be discussion-action.
As a discussion-action item to the agenda, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That has been added and will be item number four, and we'll move public comment down to item number five. All right. Any other additions, corrections, modifications to the agenda? Okay. With that, I appreciate everyone being here, staff, public, Board alike, and am looking forward to being able to discuss the budget, learn about it a little more in-depth from Mike, from their own personal readings, any insights he might have for the Board, as far as future ramifications as well. I'd just like to remind the Board is that even though we all have our different points of view and perspectives, which is a positive, which is what brings us, has made us such a great Board, that we continue to interact with respect and have an open mind, be able to share our views, but yet be open to the views of others as well. So, with that, Mike, I'll turn the time over to you for a presentation.
Okay. Thanks, Chairman. What are starting with this presentation, before we should get into the presentation of the Montsark, this is history of what we've been on. I'm going to show you a lot of history of where we've been in the last seven or eight years, and where we're headed in the next several years. For my, for the most part, when we went into this budget cycle, we had several goals. First goal was to maintain the general fund budget, to not increase it at all, to still maintain our, to be fair to all of our employees in the district, and to try to look at places where we could reallocate positions according to what student needs are. After many, many, many hours of wrangling back and forth, we feel like we got to that point. When we first started looking at the budget, right after spring break, we came together and we're at 900 to a million dollars over budget. So, this budget reflects that kind of cutback within this budget as well. So, let's get into a little bit about where we're at. This first slide is actual carryover balances of the general fund for the past several years, since 2006, '07. As you remember, 2006 was the first year of our budget stabilization levy, and at that point in time, our fund balance, fund balance is carryover money that you anticipate bringing into the next year. So, at that point in time, our fund balance was $5.3 million. And you can see every year since then, we've accumulated additional money, additional money, knowing that at some point in time, we were going to be in a point that we were going to have to start drawing from the fund balance to maintain our budget going forward. And when we first set this plan in place back in 2006, we were projecting that supplemental levy to be somewhere around 2011 and 2012, when we were going to be out in front of the voters asking for additional funds. At that point in time, in the budget cycle, we were, we were hiring between eight and 10 new positions a year, which was about $600,000 to $700,000 in additional funds. And we were negotiating with the teachers' association for a 4 percent raise on the base, and 4 percent plus the steps and lanes is, in today's dollars, it would be about another two and a half million dollars. So, it's a lot of money that we were talking, and the budget was increasing every year. So, over the course of the years, and especially in the years of 2010 and '11, when the economy in Blaine County went bad, we knew we had to slow things down. And at that point in time, was when we decided as a district that we were going to start, start looking at how we could reallocate the positions that we have, according to where the need has been. And even if you're looking, we'll get into this a little bit in the future slides, but right now, we're spending about two and a half million dollars more per year than we're actually bringing in revenue. So, that's why the fund balances are declining.
Like, can you just say that, two and a half million?
We're spending close to two and a half million dollars more than what we're bringing in revenue.
Two and a half, more per year than one more, okay.
So, fund balance hit the high in July of 2011 of almost $15 million.
Mike, do you mind if I find her up for one second? Kathy's requested that when you change slides, go ahead and announce that, so she can follow along with the presentation as well.
Okay. We're on slide three.
If we have questions, do you want us to raise our hands in the middle? You know, just jump in when there's questions in the slides? Okay.
I'm projecting fund balance in June of 2015, next month, to be at about $5.8 million. Now, you've got to realize that this is, this is going to be a pretty conservative number, and it could be anywhere between the 5.8 and maybe 6 million or 6.1 million, depends on what our final revenue comes in. So, our fund balance, at the end of this current fiscal year, is going to be back to where it was in fiscal year 2006 and '07. We're two years away from the supplemental levy. When the fund balance was going to hit zero, we're going to be negative zero, it'll be below. Okay, I'm going to slide four. Okay, slide four is actual revenues that we've received through the general fund. And you can see in this slide, 2006 and '07 were barely where we were back eight years ago in fiscal year 2014. It's very close to where we were. Over the course of those years, the state funding started to dry up, and all of the money that we were not collecting was coming from the state. So, the state sources started drying up. All of our levies, our budget stabilization levy and override levy that we have currently, they were all fixed amount levies, they can't be increased, regardless of what happens with market value depending. So, you can see we peaked out in 2010, '11, and have been declining ever since then. The biggest year was 2011, '12, when we dropped about 1.7 million, almost $1.8 million. And we've been increasing slightly up to that point, but it's still going to take us several years to get up to where we're, the point we were at in 2010, '11. Okay, general fund revenues, I'm on slide five, Kathy. General fund revenues are basically the same as they were in June of 2007. Our general fund revenue for the current fiscal year is projected to be up one-half of 1 percent. Our general fund revenues for next fiscal year are the, will be up less than 1 percent overall. 66 percent of our general fund revenues are frozen because of the budget stabilization levy and the other levies that we have, that are basically frozen, it can't be increased. We have two very small levies, a tort levy and a tuition levy that can go up 3 percent, but both of them combined are about $60,000. So, that's about a $2,000 increase. Of the projected $15.8 million that we receive, that we're projecting for next year in state revenue, $2.1 million is earmarked for specific programs. For example, transportation for getting students to and from school, leadership premium money, limited English proficiency, professional development, those types of things. There's probably a dozen different areas that we're required to spend money on, like classroom technology, technology support staff, things like that, that makes up that $2.1 million. Next slide. Okay, here's our general fund expenses. You can see in 2006 and '07, that was one of the years that we were paying some construction projects to the general fund. The plant facility levy took over in 2007, the fiscal year 2007, '08. You can see the decline in the general fund expenditures when we moved the construction projects and the things that we were doing through the general fund, like technology purchases into the plant facility fund. And you can see the steadily increasing in general fund expenditures ever since that point in time.
What's the cause of the steady general increase, or steady gradual increase, I should say?
Well, if you look at, it's all salaries. 86 percent of our general fund budget is salaries and benefits. So, for example, a 1 percent increase on the base, just movement in salary schedules alone costs us about $847,000. So, just the fact that we've been able to keep the general fund intact and not increase in over the past five years, and you can see that those, that salaries and benefits numbers, percentage of the money is getting larger and larger every year.
I have a question.
Okay.
You talked about the step marines costing about $800,000. What is that, do you know what that, given the step marines, what is that average rate for adoption?
2 percent.
2 percent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll go to the next slide, Kathy. Okay, general fund expenditures are 7 percent higher this last fiscal year of June of 2014 than they were in June of 2007. General fund expenditures are projected to be up less than 1 percent in the current fiscal year, over, in the next fiscal year over what they are right now. General fund revenues will be $2.6 million less than the expenditures, and an additional $2.4 next year. So, that's what's eating into the fund balance. Movement on the salary schedules is a cost of $827,000 per year. Okay, next slide. Okay, this is just a summary showing actual expenses and actual revenues and actual fund balances for the past several years. So, you can see, these are the same numbers as they were on the prior slides, but they're just all together, showing, you know, where I projected, where fiscal year 2013, '14, that dollar amount was about three and a half, $3.4 million more than we spent that when we had revenue, that year, when we had revenue coming in.
Mike, so the fund balance is the carryover?
Fund balance is carryover funds.
So, what's the, you know, there's over a $3 million drop from '13 to '14, and then we, then there's about another $3 million drop from this year to next year, proposed for next year, where the other ones are, well, I guess there's a $5 million there. So, can you explain that?
I can. The fiscal year 2013, '14 is the year that we had the payoff. And that's also the same year that we have, our textbook adoption came in much higher than we had before.
And that, would that be in addition to, because you were saying we're, we're short about two and a half million every year? I mean, is that within that?
Yeah, that would be the three and a half, that other $1 million was the cause of that.
Okay. '13 to '14, and now we have the '14 to '15, we're down about $3 million. And what was that, the reason for that, for this year's $3 million drop?
If you look at what's going on, the more we hold the general fund budget steady, the more salaries and benefits makes up that total cost of the expenditures. And just to maintain salary schedules is $827,000. That doesn't go away. So, a 1 percent on the base is another $400,000. So, you know, a step plus 1 percent is actually a cost of $1.2 million.
Okay, okay.
And your revenues aren't increasing very much, so it just continually gets bigger and bigger.
Right, and it continually starts eating away at it?
Correct.
Okay.
So, here's the projections for the next, what I'm showing next year's, next several years.
Next slide, Kathy.
Kathy. And you can see in the next fiscal year 2015, '16, we have a slight increase in revenues of about $380,000. We'll have a, projected expenditures are going to be pretty close to where they are this current year, with what we've been able to do within the general fund. But you can see the fund balance is still declining down to about $3.1 million next year.
And that's because of the, let's say, 1.2 in salaries?
There's a lot of factors.
And what else is comprised of, I guess, that two and a half million, if you've got 1.2 for salaries and benefits?
It's going to be pretty much all salaries and benefits is what it is.
The two and a half million? Okay.
Well, and utility costs and everything else that happens within the general fund.
Okay.
So, I mean, you can see between the two, this, this dropped about $3 million this year, and another $2.6 million for the next year. So, it's, you know, it's just all of the costs that we have amongst the school district. So, you can see in fiscal year 2016, '17, we still have a slight increase in revenues, but we're going to have a big increase in projected expenditures. And I've tried, I've tried to take into account with these numbers on projections of where staff retire and we bring new staff in, because there is a savings when we have staff retire.
Right, right.
Typically, that's going to be about $38,000 to $42,000 per staff member when we bring somebody in versus where they retire at.
Okay.
So, the more retirement you have, the more savings you have, that will help offset those projected expenses.
On average, how many retirements do we have per year, and has that been consistent over the last few years?
It's typically about, oh, maybe 10 to 14 a year. Some years, it'll be up as high as 20, or 18 to 20. Projected 10 percent a year within this slide. It will, yeah, it will, it will start to increase, because the more, the longer we go, we have about 50 percent of our staff that will be eligible for retirement in the next four years. So, those numbers of retirees are going to start building up more and more over the next several years, for sure.
Mr. Blackman.
The average age of our staff right now is 52.
Yes.
52.
52. Trustee Baker has a question?
Um, yes. With the, we allocated positions that we have coming to the Board this year, what is the cost to fund those 10 positions approximately?
I haven't figured that number, Kathy.
Pardon me?
I have not figured that number, as far as what the actual cost is versus what the cost of the new positions coming in. I don't have that, I don't have that.
Well, I mean, if we, if we're eliminating those 11 positions that are not needed, and we're adding in 10 positions that we currently don't have, but we would like to have, I guess, those are things that we have survived without for the past several years. And so, my question would be, you know, if that's approximately $100,000 a position, that's like a million dollars right there, that we currently aren't spending, well, we are spending, but we deemed unnecessary positions. And so, I guess I would just like to fully set the validity of the pending positions, that this is the financial situation that we're facing, and we're looking at really needing to make some cuts. To extend this as far out as possible, you know, I think that that needs to be a consideration. I know that trustee Shorewell got up in last night's meeting, you know, taking those same, that same look at some of the other departments that maybe weren't looked at when these relocations were made, such as administration, specifically now that we have an opening in the assistant principal position at the high school, and looking at what the norms are for having that position exist, and the, and the absolute need for it. So, I guess throwing that out there as a consideration for trying to reduce our budget further, even potentially this year, and saving not only this year's cost, but the increment on costs moving forward associated with all of those positions, or maybe a portion of them.
Dr. Holmes.
Was that done at all?
I think that part of this conversation would be involved, it would include the secondary principals, because the positions that are changing are basically a reflection of the fact that our student population has moved from the elementary to the secondary, and the secondary staff requested positions to help with that increased enrollment, and that's a reflection of what you're seeing in the additions to, or the new positions that are being added in lieu of the 11 that were...
Reallocated.
Reallocated, yeah. So, I think that's a conversation that we, in a little bit after we get through the presentation, we could certainly ask the secondary principals to address that.
I recognize a portion of those positions are a reflection of that changing population, but I don't believe that that represents all 10 positions.
I think, I think it represents nine of the 10.
I, well, if we can have that discussion later into the, into the presentation, then I think that would be a valid discussion.
You know, and until, until tonight, Kathy, I haven't heard any direction from the Board about looking at ways to reduce the general fund budget.
Right. Well, I would agree with you, Mike, but I think that having these real numbers in front of us that take a pretty bleak picture for our very near future is something we're counting that discussion, you know, even if it's today, of the Board. I mean, I, I just, I do recognize the fact that you are operating under the direction of what the Board gave you at the beginning of this budgeting process, so I'm not trying to imply that you're not doing what you are asked to do. It's just when the numbers actually show up on paper and it's that close, and that's not assuming, you know, there's some unexpected, significant unexpected thing, then I think it's a serious discussion that we need to start adding this year.
Well, according to this slide, you know, these, these projections are very real. It's definitely conversations that we need to start entering into, where do we want to go from here? Are we going to look at supplemental levy in two years? Or are we going to look at not replacing staff as a retiree in the next several years, to get back down to a balanced budget with the revenues are equal to the expenditures?
Thank you.
Okay. Next slide. Projected enrollments for the elementary schools for next year is K-5, and Bellevue 254, Cari's 111, and that's K-5. That's why it's not matching up with numbers you see in other places. Next slide. Okay, so here's Bellevue Elementary's enrollment numbers currently, and where they're projected to be next year. And so, for example, the 2014, '15 year, preschool has 31 students, and they have two sections. That doesn't mean they have two teachers, that means they have two sections, because preschool is an AM and a PM section. So, we have one teacher that covers both of those. But you can see, like, for example, in Bellevue and preschool next year, during the registration, we have 28 students sign up at the preschool level. Now, kindergarten, for example, this year, we have, we have 40 students in the kindergarten program, we're projecting 40 kids next year, and we only have 24 registered as of the time we put this together. Now, it has, it may have increased by now, but typically what we see over the course of the summer is we have parents that don't pre-register their kids for kindergarten, and we also have students coming from the private preschools and coming into the school system at the time of registration in the fall. So, in the past, we have had influx of kids coming in right at the time the school starts. This isn't an anomaly that we have this year that we don't ever see before, because we have seen this in the past. Okay, and the reason on the sections for 2015, '16, we're showing the 13 teachers for those sections, or the 13 sections for that year, 254 students, so there's an increase of enrollment of about eight students. And we're going to, we're leaving it up to the principals on how, how they're going to reallocate those, allocate those positions, according to where the needs are within the individual schools.
Trustee Graves?
Uh, okay, I think actually I was looking at it wrong, because I was looking at the 14, '15, thinking that that's what it was going to look like next year, but of course, we don't know because of the enrollment. So, okay, so there, so Bellevue's going to be down one teacher according to the relocations, and the average class size should be 19.5. Okay, thank you.
If you accumulate all of them, if you have them.
Mm-hmm.
But I know, you know, as we talked in the past, the goal was to keep K through, your pre-K, K through second at 20, and three, four, and five are a little higher. So, that kind of skews the student-teacher ratio there. Okay, next slide. This is what our projections are for Hare Elementary School, and it's the same type of a format. 2015, '16, they'll have seven sections. Preschool is a section, one section, and it's a, I don't, I can't, I don't know if it's a morning section or an afternoon section.
Morning.
Morning section, so it's a half a day. They have, currently, they have nine students registered for preschool and kindergarten. Okay, Haley Elementary, same type of a scenario. Preschool, they have 39 students in the preschool now, they have 40 at the registration, they have 52 students. At the kindergarten level, they have 39 now that are registered. And Haley is very similar to all of the elementary schools, and probably Hemingway is much more dramatic because of the Montessori school in Ketchum. We usually pick up a lot more kids coming from preschool into kindergarten than the Montessori school than we do at the other schools in the valley.
Mike, where we have 40 already registered, if that registration was to increase drastically, would that be looking at adding another section of preschool?
That would be a possibility. In the past, what we've done is capped preschool at 20 per grade level, and anybody that wanted to be in, they just had to be on a waiting list.
There's your problem.
Or shift them to another school.
Okay.
And just to remember, preschool, it's on a sliding B scale, so we do have some, some parents that pay for the preschool. Okay, Hemingway Elementary, this is what it looks like. Preschool, we have 19 kids in the preschools right now, we have 15 enrolled. In kindergarten, we have 60 in preschool now, or in kindergarten, we have 60 students enrolled or in school right now, and we have 44 in the registration numbers. But you can see on the bottom that, you know, we're projecting enrollment... But you can see on the bottom that, you know, we're projecting enrollment to be increased from 398 to 432 next year.
Yeah, so I'm curious, so it looks like there were 60, like where, I guess, why are you projecting that increase or where is that for 21 kids?
First grade level?
Yeah.
It typically will have kids come in from the Montessori program.
Oh, you just said that.
Both preschool and kindergarten into the school system.
But more so next year than other years?
No, no, I think it's been pretty consistent over the past 10 years. Montessori school has kindergarten program as well. We picked some up through, after preschool and some of them...
Right, but still a jump from 21 from last year's enrollment?
Yeah, that's typically what, that's typically what we see in there.
Most of the, most of the enrollments, you could just take them and roll them forward a grade, but at first kindergarten, first grade at Hemingway, we add it because usually if you roll it forward, you don't have enough slots because of the addition of kids that show up. So most of these charts you see, we just rolled it forward a year.
Right, right, right.
But at Hemingway, you always have to add more first graders.
As well as...
So they tell me.
Yeah, as well as if we get to the start of school next year and we do only have 60 kids in the first grade, somewhere around there, then still gives Don the flexibility to adjust his staff to make those other staff, student-to-teacher ratios lower than the upper grade school. Okay, this is what Alters looks like. Alters doesn't have a preschool program, so that's why they're off in a kindergarten level. We have 61, we have 72 currently enrolled and we have 61 to register for next year.
Next slide.
Yeah, next slide Kathy. Okay, this one's kind of explaining, starting to explain the theories of why we did what we did on allocations and how we allocated reading positions in special education. In the 2015-16 budget, it put as many incidences of staff support following the student needs. Like for example, the technology shift from Bellevue Elementary to Cary Elementary is implement that program down there. We looked at all of our reading positions and the full-time equivalency, reading positions comes from the general fund and federal funds under Title I. So we reallocated according to the student population with, that were scoring a low, low on reading scores on the IRI scores. Special education was the same type of a thing. We looked at the full-time equivalencies with the general fund and the IDEA funds, which are also federal funds. And we reallocated according to student population and we also reallocated based on IDPs on the time that was specified in the IDPs. English language learners, we looked at the full-time equivalencies, that's also being paid out of the general fund and Title III, which is another federal program, and reallocated according to the student population of those two. Thing that you have to remember in these federal funds is you can't, the federal funds have to be used to supplement programs, they can't be used to replace existing positions. So what you have to do is you have to equalize all of the schools and then you put the additional supplemental staff into those areas that have the highest needs or most students that are scoring low on the IRI scores to help supplement those schools' needs with the additional staff.
If I could add on to that Mike, in the Title I funds, you have to put them in the schools who qualify based on free and reduced lunch, so.
So there are several different areas that you have to, that you have to look at. First of all, you have to equalize all of the schools and then you have to start plugging those staff members in where they're needed the most, taking into everything else to account whether, you know, they are considered a title one school.
Trusty Baker?
Um, there was a comment Dr. Holmes just made regarding the Title I funds. Can you remind us which schools are considered Title I and which are not?
Bellevue and Alters.
And Cary.
And Cary.
We have three, Cary, Bellevue, Alters.
Tell me your answer, okay.
Okay, so here's, here's the matrix that we used when we allocated staffing and we also allocated the amount of money that we were budgeting for supplies and the equipment for each of the different schools. We did it a little bit different, a lot different this year based on student population. So if you look at the matrix, you have total enrollment is in the very far left-hand column black. Some of those students in the left-hand column are also counted across the table as well depending on if they need gate services or reading services or if they're LAP. I mean, you could have a student that's counted in the enrollment, you could have also in LAP, in reading, in special education. So you could have one student that's, could be allocated in four different places. And the reason we did that was to try to match up student needs, supply dollars with the schools that were, that have the heavy populations in those areas. Okay, are there any questions on this? And we looked at, we looked at student enrollments from two different times. When we first created this chart back in January, we looked at the November counts and then when we revised this, we looked at the counts in the middle of March, I think it was March, right in the middle of March, to do again, to come up with the final allocations of where we were going to set the budget at. Okay, reading specialist support and student needs, the reading specialists are distributed according to the student needs, support was leveled according to the student-to-teacher ratios as we discussed earlier. Federal funds in Title I are additional support for low-income students scoring low on the IRI scores. Our, within the two certified staff members in Title I, one is located at Cary Elementary and one is located at Alters Elementary School. So we have two certified staff in the Title I funds. Within the non-certified staff, we have one located at Bellevue and one located at Alters. Now, if you look at last year's, and we'll look at that chart here in a second, you'll see that both of those non-certified staffs were allocated to Cary last year and we made that adjustment to switch to bring up more reading staff into those other two elementary schools based on the formulary survey we were using.
Trusty Baker?
So with the appropriations being given to the three Title I schools, um, the Hemingway and Haley would be the only team that did not receive any staffing because of the Title I. Was there any additional staffing that was not Title I given to those schools, especially looking at Haley considering the high number of kids in those special categories, you know, effectively making them a population of 765, which is the second highest of the elementary schools?
Yeah, you can't do that because it's considered supplanting and federal funds doesn't allow you to do that. You can supplement, but you can't supplant.
So you have to equalize everybody first and then you can only give the additional base in the Title I schools?
Right, because Hemingway and Haley are not Title I schools.
Right, so you can't even just give them additional staff to support them outside of Title I because then that would not, it would adjust, it wouldn't make them equal anymore, is that correct?
That's correct.
Hmm, okay. Nice, I mean, I understand it, it's not logical, but I understand it.
Okay, we'll move to the next slide Kathy. And what this is, is showing the allocations of our reading specialist supports this year, the current year that we're in now compared to where we're projecting them to be next year with the allocations that we moved around. So we can see from, for example, Hemingway had two reading teachers last year, a point four of that position is going to Bellevue next year, so they're going to be reduced from a 2 FTE to a 1.6 where Bellevue is moving from a 1 FTE to a 1.4.
Now, they're moving from a 2 to a 1.4. Is that correct there?
Yeah, they're currently at 2.
Yeah, they're correct, they're currently at 2.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's correct on my present.
I changed that too, but when I looked at my numbers again today, I saw that it was just a 1.
No, they're currently 2 and they're moving to 1.4.
Okay, so special education is the same type of a situation. We have federal dollars coming in for special education for the IDEA school age and the IDEA preschool. And it's the same type of things as well here as you can't supplant with these funds, you can only supplement with these funds, but there is no restrictions as far as low-income status on these funds itself. And these staff members were allocated according to the number of minutes that were recorded on the individual student's IDP plans. So currently, we have 5.25 positions certified. We have three at the high school, one at the middle school, and 1.25 at Haley. We have three non-certified positions in the IDEA program, one at the high school, one at the middle school, and one at Haley. Okay, and this is what our breakdown between the current year and the next year looks like. You can see that we have reallocated quite a bit from the middle school into the middle school from the other schools. I think we took a non-certified staff member from Bellevue, from Haley, and from the middle school and put them all, Bellevue, Alters. Is that right? Yeah, Bellevue, Alters and the, and the high school into the middle school. So we actually moved special education, non-certified staff from 9 to 12 next year. Okay, next slide. Okay, we did the same type of thing with our ELL orders. It was all based on a student-to-teacher ratio. We leveled up the student-to-teacher ratios in each of the elementary schools and then we supplanted or supplemented those positions from the Title III program into one at Alters and one at Hemingway. So we have two non-certified positions being paid out of those federal dollars. And one thing I might add, you'll see it later on another slide, is all of these federal programs, all of the money that's budgeted in these federal programs are going to salaries and benefits. With the exception of Title I where we have to have some, some...
Parent involvement?
Yeah, parent involvement ones and homeless funds and professional developer-type funds we have to allocate for that. Kathy, next slide. So here's what the ratios look like currently versus what they'll look like next year. Okay, next slide. Okay, now I'm going to get into plant facilities lobby. And within this budget presentation, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to look at a broad overview of what's going on with the school district instead of really getting down into the detail. But if we want to get into the detail, we'll have time to be able to do that. At the plant facilities lobby, which is our next biggest fund within, within the school district, we're entering into our sixth year of a 10-year levy. We have the authorization to plant 5 million, $980,000 per year. I'm projecting our fund balance at the end of this year to be $16.3 billion and I'm projecting fund balance next year to be $21.3 billion. As you'll also see in the next slide here, that we have 27.2 billion dollars in QSEP bonds, qualified school construction bonds, that we borrowed to do all of the front-loading of all of the projects that we did back in 2010, 11, and 12. At the, we borrowed the money from the federal government for the middle interest.
Can you repeat that, what you just said about the, because that's not up there? So we owe $27,000, $27 million?
We owe $27.2 million.
When do we owe that?
We owe it right now.
Oh.
We will be paying it.
Okay, when are we going to pay that bill?
We'll get into that in the next slide, I'll show you.
Okay.
How it all works.
We have not to fault.
Okay. So the difference that we have right now, so for example, in June of 2016, we'll have about $21.3 million. That money, the difference between that and the actual money that we owe, the 27.9, is $5.9 million. And that money can be collected either, can be collected over the next three years to pay that $27.9 million. Currently, we have those funds invested through Seattle, sort of Seattle Northwest Securities earning 0.84% interest. And it's all, it's all invested according to our district policy, which is also according to state statute on what we can invest money in. Very secure stuff, government bonds, only things that are fully secured. So we, they buy a lot of school district bonds, municipality bonds, university bonds within Idaho, no corporate bonds, US Treasury notes, things like that. We have a projected interest earnings for next year of $100,000. Okay, and we are tracking meeting the goal of funding most of these projects as approved by the original levy and some of the smaller projects have been approved by the board over the last five years. All of this money that's being invested through Seattle Northwest Securities is starting to come due next August 1st. And I'll show you how it works on the next slide. But basically, we have to take 20% of the amount that's due in 2020 and put it into a sinking fund through US Bank. And so, for example, next August 1st of 2016...
So not this, not, so August 2016?
Yes.
Is when we are...
A year and three months.
When it's due, when we're going to pay it?
When we have to start paying.
Next slide Kathy, and it'll help explain this a little bit. So you can see on this, here's all of our series of bonds through here, there was five different series that we borrowed the money on. And here's the payments that they're due. So on August 1st of 2016, $999,000 is owed on this series and this amount is owed on the series of 2010, B, 2011. So August 1st of 2016, we will deposit 5 million, $440,000 in US Bank. And that will be into an interest-bearing account at US Bank and they'll have all of those investments mature in August of 2020. So all of the interest that we earn on this $5.4 million belongs to the school district over the course of the next four years, just as it does right now in the investments that we do. So next August in 2017, we'll deposit another $5.4 million and accumulate until this, until 2020, August, all of this $27.2 million is there.
So do you have a projection of how much interest we'll make in a lot of years?
No, it depends on what the interest rates are at that point in time. Like, I don't think they're going to be any less than they are now.
So $100,000 a year?
It's going to be more than that.
And will that go back into our general fund? The interest?
It will stay within the school plant facilities. It has to stay...
So we can't move it over?
No.
Not without going back to the voters for approval.
But it can help us with our building maintenance and whether we're taking it out of the general fund, it can replace... If we're taking it out of the general fund, it can replace roof stuff like that a little bit.
We don't have to say what we're, I mean, we'd have to say what we're using it for, though. But we could, you know, if the roof blows off Kerry, we can go use that money.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you can use it for whatever the board deems necessary.
And can it just stay in there for, even after 2020?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no restrictions on what it has to be spent on, it's just a board approval for those projects to be spent. Okay, and I'm probably going to get into a lot more detail with the school plant facilities money than anybody will ever want to know, but...
This is great, though. This is really great presentation.
What I'm going to start doing is going through each individual building, the money that we have budgeted for all of those projects, and then come up with a total of where we are right now. And my intent is to put this same type of a format on the district website and update it every quarter at least, if not more than that. It's taken me a while to come up with a format that I thought was pretty easy to understand and not real cumbersome to keep up to date. So, for example, on this one, this is just the income we've received on the plant facility levy over the past five years. So the levy amount is $59.8 billion. We've actually collected $29.3 billion of that money through March or April 30th. Here's the prior levy, so this would have been the levy of $2,000 that we passed. This is still money that's coming in from people paying property taxes late. We receive a little bit of money all the time. Penalties and interest is the same type of thing, when people pay their taxes late, they pass on the interest and the penalties to the taxing agencies where it belongs. So over the course of five years, the $316,000 we've collected in back taxes, $160,000 additional dollars came in from penalties and interest.
Trustee Baker?
Mike, I'm currently getting touched with when we are on the other slide, which was if you go back through the projected expenses. In the past, we've received requests from the middle school, we've already gave gym expansion and lunchroom additions. Is that something that's not going to be coming back ever again? I don't think the board's denied it, I think we just tabled it for further information or further research, and I don't see that listed yet.
This is expenses for the, just next year, not further out, and...
No, I understand, but I thought it was going to come back to us next year.
If it comes back to us next year, the expense will actually be the year after.
Oh, you got it. That makes sense, thank you, Sean.
By the time you get through all of those committee meetings and the architectural designs and things like that, you couldn't even think about breaking ground for at least 16 months.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think I may have missed this slide too, Kathy.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
But this is, in this coming year's budget, this is the amount of money we are projecting to be spent in the school plant facilities fund. Technology of $750,000. We're looking at retro commissioning the current heating, ventilation, air conditioning system at Alteras. That's not going to happen this summer, but we're looking at doing that next summer, depending on where the payback comes in on that. Because every one of these projects, we want to look at the payback and see, how long is that payback period? How much energy are we going to save on electricity to where we can pay that $140,000 off, to where it makes sense?
Right.
Typically, in the past projects, these HVAC retro commissioning projects have a pretty quick payback period of, like, maybe five years or less.
Wow.
HVAC, lighting, very similar.
Yep. And it's the same thing for the Alteras Elementary School, the lighting retrofit. That will probably happen next summer as well. We'll start working on it in January of this coming year.
Trustee Baker?
So, looking at the three quarters of money technology purchases, can you give at least a broad overview of what that represents?
Teresa?
You're on.
Come on up to the mic.
Great, if I have my spreadsheet available.
You want to look at it?
No, that's okay.
We don't need to say detail, just an overview of the plant fund.
It's a continuation of our one-to-one initiative at the high school and additional computing devices for students at the middle school to continue to replace computers that are outdated. We don't even have enough funds to be able to do that entirely. We continue to support the school technology efforts, depending on what the needs are at the different buildings. That's going to include interactive systems, projectors, document cameras, printers, all of the general technology that every classroom has, as well as our computer labs. We replace at least two computer labs a year, if not more. Okay, oh, thank you, Mike. See, what else do we have in there? The major, there are two major areas of software expense. One is going to be infrastructure software, for example, Skyward, and all of our server software, Microsoft Office, Microsoft Windows, any of those Macintosh operating systems, so the, what's needed to run the wireless, all the infrastructure pieces. Then we have another area of software, which is instructional, and that would include things like Benetton's place, all the...
Which is STAR, with STAR reading test.
STAR and AR.
Kathy, a lot of that, those expenditures are general fund expenditures that are in the budget right now. The plant facility fund, the majority of that, about $500,000 of that, is actually coming in for the lab replacements and computer replacements on the five-year rotation cycle. And there's another quarter of a million dollars that's set aside for school needs.
Are we maximizing everything that we could possibly put in the plant facility fund and not sending it out of our general fund that would be qualified under technology?
Yes.
I know you mentioned something, and I don't know what it is, but you mentioned something about like tier one, tier two software, something about that?
Yeah.
Or tier two, tier three, when we were discussing things earlier today? And have we kind of gone through the budget and ensured that anything that would qualify under the plant facility could be removed out of our general fund, maximized it?
For the most part, we have, yes. The plant facility fund is only designed to pay for equipment-type things, hardware things, not for software, site licenses, things like that, although you can, but we haven't chose to do that. But there's a little bit of general fund money on, that Howie is spending on improvements like sidewalk repairs and things like that. It's not, it's not a tremendous amount of money, but it was just never earmarked within the school plant facilities funds itself and voted on by the taxpayers. I think it's only like $150,000 a year, something like that. Okay, the other three projects we're looking at doing, and they'll probably start this summer, is the district office security system. That would be the cameras, the controls on the doors, things like we have at all of the elementary schools and all of the other buildings. We want to look at, depending on what the payback period is on the HVAC system in this building, which I can tell you is very poor. And also a fire suppression sprinkler system in this building. This, I think this is our only building that we have that's not protected with fire sprinklers.
Tech building.
A tech building. So we'll go to the next slide, Kathy. Okay, and I'll skip down to the interest income because we talked about penalties and interest. So this is the money that we're earning on through the investment account that we have set up. Of the $16 million that we have set aside, that's the amount of interest that we've accumulated on those investments over the five years. One thing, one thing you have to, because if you look at five years and you divide to $346,000, it doesn't sound like it's a lot of money, but the thing you're doing is when you're buying the bonds, you're paying a premium on the bonds to buy them because you're getting a much higher interest rate than the coupon rate is. So that takes into account all of the premiums that we paid on those bonds as well. If you look at the investments now, we're earning probably close to $60,000 every three months on those investments now. The other local money is, the majority of that money, probably 95% of that money is idle power rebates that came back in for making our buildings energy efficient. One of the projects, and I can't remember which one it was, I think it was the Haley Elementary remodel that we did in the basement, we transferred the money from the bond fund to residual money that we had left over in the bond fund into the plant facilities fund to help pay for that. We received a solar grant from the state of Idaho to put the solar panels on Kerry High School, that's with that in us. And the $5 million Department of Energy grant we received for the fence.
Mike, do you happen to know ballpark how much the solar grant is producing and saving us?
They changed the way that they were doing that, so instead of actually providing a dollar amount, they started crediting back the KFAL, so there has to be a extrapolation done. So I talked to the Masons a couple months ago, and he and I can sit down and go through that, $70,000, it's an offset.
Okay.
It's actually changed the way also, they used to, didn't use that, lost it, now they're crediting that, so we actually have, they actually run zero balance sometimes this summer down at Kerry. It kicks back in.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go to the next slide. Okay, here's Bellevue Elementary School. And you can see, if you compare these to all of the different projects we have that was voted on the plant facilities levy, this is exactly what the dollar amounts that were approved in the budget in each one of these different categories. So you can see, here's what was budgeted, this is the amount of money that was spent, and this is the variances between each one of the accounts. Now, one thing to keep in mind as we go through all of this stuff, this geothermal project, it takes into account everything from here up. So you can see, for example, the geothermal project was about $900,000 over, probably you add in all of these other things that were done at the same time, that did get allocated to these different areas, it's much closer than what it looks like it does right now. The door retrofits were a little bit more. PC shutdown software, we've never done anything with that, plug load controls, that was taken care of within the, the Fraser temp control was taken care of within the geothermal project. We've gone through and retrofitted all of the fixtures in the bathrooms. One thing I want to point out is, the water fixtures replacements in all of the bathrooms and the drinking pumps and everything, that wasn't to take into account remodeling the bathrooms either. That was only water fixture retrofits, as all of us. And we were able to go in and retrofit all of the bathrooms, tile, partition, and everything for less money than we had budgeted for the water retrofits.
Is that because we did a lot of that work on the fixture retrofits in-house?
We did all of the fixture retrofits in-house. That was a big portion of that, yeah. We haven't done anything with the solar snowmill with any of the schools. We have a little bit of money in irrigation improvements. We haven't done anything with leak documentation in each of the buildings. And the multipurpose room addition was about $300,000 everybody. I think we added a little square footage when we did that, pushed it a little higher than what we projected. So if you look at Bellevue Elementary School, out of all of these funds that we had, we're about $397,000 over right now currently. Okay, Kerry Elementary School, geothermal project, you've got the drop ceilings, you've got the common walkway between the buildings, the fire sprinkler system, the lighting and occupancy sensors. All of this, all of these were done within this budget amount right here.
That'll be fine, thanks.
So you have all of this stuff from here up. So in actuality, if you look at that, Kerry Elementary School was under budget.
We lost Rob, but he's going to be in and out of connection right now, so he would have to call me back when he can be brought back in.
So if you look at Kerry Elementary by itself, we're about $175,000 of the good right now.
Are there other projects planned for down there, or we feel sufficient?
We're done, we're done at Kerry Elementary School, unless, unless we do something different here in the next several years. For now, everything that we said we were going to do with the plant facility, I think we've done. Okay, here's Kerry Secondary and Gym, same type of a thing, geothermal project, we had $2.3 million budgeted, so we did everything from here, it was underlying here up. So you can see Kerry Secondary and Gym, we were under budget all across the board there. And the door retrofit money here is in the Kerry Elementary number as well. So there's not going to be any more money spent on door retrofits, the PC shutdown software, the plug load control, the water fixture retrofits, we haven't done anything with that for leak documentation. Community Campus Building, we have the geothermal project in this building as well. You can see we had a lot of money that we had set aside to install drop ceilings within that building, so we were actually able to go in and completely remodel that center area in front of the auditorium and put a much higher grade drop ceiling in that area and still spend less money than we had budgeted for that. We were able to take care of the fire suppression sprinkler system for way less than what was budgeted. A lot of the lighting and occupancy sensor money was on the state of Idaho grant that we received, so that's why we didn't spend a lot of that money. They had a program where they were coming in and retrofitting school buildings, and they would come in and bring their own electric company in and just do the entire retrofit and the state paid for it. And we just had, the only thing we had to do was turn over the idle power rebates back to them. So we had a couple of schools that we did that with. Haley was one, and we were in Canathas was one, and Hemingway. So you can see, water fixture retrofits in the community campus building. We didn't go in and completely remodel those bathrooms, but we still did for much less.
Are we still, are we still considering doing the VFDs on the heat pump loops?
We are.
That's my, that's my world, I love it, sorry.
Typically, yeah, typically those have a real high payback.
We get a $60 incentive per horsepower, for idle power.
Yeah. And I thought, yeah, Howie and I were talking about that just the other day, because I thought they had done that when, when they were doing the geothermal project in there, but I'm, I'll have to go back and check with Brian and see if they did. But I know when we did that at the middle school, we had a real quick payback.
Yeah.
Like two and a half years. Okay, next slide. Here's the district office, here's the amount of money that we have budgeted in several categories, we haven't done anything in this building at all. Haley Elementary. This was a building that was, that we really did a lot with, geothermal projects, we was almost $3.5 million. Remodeled the kitchen, drop ceilings, lighting occupancy sensors. The lighting was a lot more money in this building than it was, even, even when we had the state come in and do some of it as well. The carpet flooring replacement was over budget because we had some asbestos in the glue underneath the tile, when they started pulling up the old carpet, the old tile was coming up with it, so we had... was coming up with it, so we had to hire an abatement company to come in and abate all of that master gal. So I mean, if you look at the bottom of this, we are about nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars over in this building. And I believe we're pretty much done. You know, we want to look at an upgraded irrigation improvement program within the district, so we may look at doing something with that, depending on how much water we can save. If we have a payback period that has over the next ten years, we'll look at that before we come to a board and say if we want to move forward with this. Hemingway Elementary School is the latest project we just completed. The geothermal project, we had carpet replacement that was much less than we had budgeted for, so we did the solution of east side ice. The door retrofits were all taken care of in this one major project that we have from here up. Lighting and occupancy sensors, that was all done by the state, so we saved that much money. De-lighting was also included in this budget up here. We were also able to go in and retrofit all of those bathrooms too. So if you look at Valby, we're about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars over, but take into account this budget number right here, we did that last year and did, we didn't have any money budgeted for it at all. But that was to clean up that entire site like we've done with Haley and Cary and Valby and all of the elementary schools that we've done in the past several years.
So, so are you talking the parking lot and the, that in between shape?
Parking lot, parking lot.
Right.
The skylights and the lunchroom, it's them and the lunchroom, all that kind of stuff.
Oh, that's the lunchroom and whatnot?
Correct. I'm looking at Howie, right?
It is.
Oh, Hemingway site and the addition, so the site is the parking lot and the lighting and the?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so here's the Silver Creek High School, the DSS building. Same type of thing, all of the, the retrocommissioning was taken care of when they did the geothermal project. The heat ventilation, air conditioning retrofits, lighting was taken care of at the same time, so everything from here up was included in that, in the budget number that we did. We didn't do anything with the waste oil furnace because when we looked at that, I believe that the budget that we were presented with was about five times that amount of money. And the payback just didn't make sense, so we didn't do that. So on the DSS Silver Creek High School building, we've got about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars over, under budget. Winter River High School, all of this stuff from here up was included in the geothermal project at that site. So if you look at overall, Winter River High School, we're about seventy-seven thousand over budget. The middle school, did a lot of that stuff last year. We still want to look at installing the VFD. Did we give the VFD on last year? So that number is included in, in this number here, the solar rate, we added on to the building as well. So if you look at the middle school, we're about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars over budget. Alteras, we haven't done much at Alteras yet, but these are the things that you want to look at. The VFD on the heat pump loop, the retrocommissioning. And I have Brian working on some numbers on payback grades for both of us, that we'll look at doing sometime.
Brian Ver Musa?
Yes. He's our energy engineer that we hired. Okay, here's all the miscellaneous projects that, that we've completed that don't fit necessarily, like here's the money from the elementary school, thirteen point eight million dollars that we haven't spent any money with. The middle school addition, we had those site improvements out of Cary with redoing the entire parking lot, separating the bus drop off and the parent pickup, those types of things. The maintenance and food storage building, all the safety and security measures that we've done district-wide. The radios, UPS backup system, the generator, air conditioning, and fiber optic was all money that the general fund paid prior to the Plant Facility Lottery being passed, and we just transferred that money back into the general fund. Maybe, I think we have approval in December to do that. Nine point five million dollars in technology, we've spent a little over five million right now, so we have four point four million dollars left. And then we have a couple of smaller technology ideas that we earmarked going forward too, that we haven't spent any of the, those two numbers will probably, will work into this technology budget at some point in time, or just wherever you decide to do it, it is available now. So that's all the miscellaneous projects. Okay, here's all of the expenses that we've had that has, we didn't have any kind of a budget coming out before. So the legal fees for the judicial confirmation for us to be able to borrow on those qualified school contracts. The legal fees for the McKinstry lawsuit, US Bank fees, we have to pay US Bank like an annual fee so they can collect the funds and distribute the money to the bondholders who have to pay us. Interest that we've paid, remember when we had, when we borrowed the funds from the federal government, it was completely a hundred percent subsidized, and since they went through their sequestration three years ago, they scaled that back a little bit to where we're only, we're only paying ninety-two point seven percent of it now. We have to pay the seven point three percent, but there is talks that they're going to eliminate that sequestration and go back to the hundred percent. The issuance costs for the bond, for the bonds, it wasn't legal fees, but to sell the bonds and the underwriter fees was four hundred and thirty-four thousand. Haley Classroom Addition was a five hundred and twenty-nine. The solar grant, you see the revenue that offset that prior. When we remodeled Haley for Woodside Elementary, Alteras Elementary, was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the Silver Creek High School remodel project. So those come up to about five point one million dollars. And if you compare that back to the first slide that we were talking about, I think that number that we've collected more, what was it, seven point four million?
Wait, say that again?
We've collected seven point four million dollars on the Plant Facility project that we did not have budgeted, it's coming in. So the seven point four million dollars from the revenue coming in that's not budgeted more than offsets the five point one that we've spent that was not budgeted. Can you see what that says?
Trustee Baker?
Mike, I have two questions. The first one is, if you take the unexpected insurance cost that we had due to sequestration and the insurance cost on the TSD, that's though, you'd have been offset by the interest we earned on that money, would that be correct?
Oh, much. It'll be a lot more than what we'll pay in those costs.
Are the amount we got in interest would be a lot more than those costs, or those costs would be a lot more?
No, the interest that we will receive over the next five years will be much more than what we pay in those costs, yeah.
Okay. And then, whereas the settlement with McKinstry, they had to pay a significant portion of our legal fees, where did that revenue show up? General fund or did it come into the fund?
There wasn't, there wasn't a check that came directly from McKinstry for that. What they did is they just netted it out according to what we owed them. So there was revenue that came in.
So it was an offsetting, or offsetting an extra?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the next slide. Okay, so the balance of the Plant Facility Fund as of April thirtieth was nineteen point eight million dollars. The items that we still need to look at completing are the elementary school entry ways for the security, the Silver Creek High School DSS building retrocommissioning, the Wood River High School complex irrigation improvements, the recovery for the domestic hot water, the middle school lighting and occupancy sensors, and the Alteras VFD on heat pump group. And the technology will be about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
So Mike, in other words, we've spent that much money so far? No?
No, that's the balance of the money that we have in the bank right now.
Oh, okay. Is there a total of how much we've spent total with all of those different slides?
Um...
With the extra expenses, you know, just everything that we've spent out of the plant facility?
You could add each one of those slides up, but I don't have the number right, I mean, I could find it right now. Do you want me to?
Sure. It doesn't, I mean, it's quick, I think that would be an interesting number, just to know what we've spent.
The trick's going to be if I can remember which drive I have that Excel sheet in.
Well, if it gets too complicated, don't worry about it.
Say, if need be, can we get that and just email that to the board at future point?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll get back to the election on what we spent today.
Okay, thank you.
And I recommend that when this presentation is done, it was that an additional slide be added to show that information is constantly requested so that anybody would have access to that information.
Yeah, the Excel sheet that I have built has that. I'm just trying to think if there was an easy way to do that, maybe if you take this number, and that's something to do either. That's something to do. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. Okay, this would be our next largest fund, would be the school lunch program. And you can see over the course of the year, the general fund was transferred in two thousand, allowed a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the school lunch program. Twelve thirteen, it was two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, it just increases slightly over the year. And the majority of that is just increase in wages that we pay to either our employees or Chartwell's employees. Chartwell's employees make less per hour than our employees do. And the benefit package isn't as good, so.
Wow, that's a lot.
One thing I want to just stress with this is, years ago, we, we used to run our old school lunch program in district. And we had, when our food service director passed away, and we looked at whether or not we were going to bring another food service director on, or if we were going to contract this out. And at that point in time, it made more sense to us to contract that company, that service out than it did to hire another food service director, because the things that you find out, in those kind of programs, it really depends on who you have hired as a manager, or about those programs are going to be successful. For example, the first contract company that we hired was Sedexel. And Sedexel brought in a young, a young manager to manage the system, and he was not very good at all. One thing to keep in mind is all of those transfers from the general fund, those are not to exceed transfers, so. If Chartwell's underestimates what their expenditures are going to be for the next year, they're on the hook for that. So those are not to exceed numbers. If they blow the budget, it's their problem, not ours. And when Sedexel was online, the deficits were much higher than what they are even next year. I mean, the deficits were running up into the three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollar range because of the manager that we had assigned to the program wasn't watching costs. And after we went through this for several years, I finally got tired of it and said, we're not going to do this anymore, I'm just going to hire another management company to come in and do it. So really, that's what happened. And it'd be the same thing if we had a manager that came in, even under our own employee, if they weren't watching costs and things like that, I mean, it's still way out of hand. Another point I want to bring with Chartwell's is, Chartwell's isn't in this program to make money. It's not like the more money we make, the more money they make. They're, they're really a partner with us. The district really dictates to Chartwell's what we want to do with the food service program. We could go completely organic, natural food, home cooking, it's just the amount of money that we want to lose every year on the program is going to have to be borne by all of us.
But what you're saying is, it, really, that hundred thousand dollar increase in the last four years has been salaries? Is that what I heard?
Salaries, food costs, costs of milk, cheese costs, they're always going up.
But, but the bulk is salary increases?
Yeah, a lot of it is salary increases. You know, even, even the new guidelines that the federal government came out with is, you know, with the less saturated fats and things that we're dealing with now, is a lot more expensive than it was five years ago. So it all adds additional costs to the program. Okay, I'm going to the next slide. The only reason I brought that up is I had a conversation with Chris Stover, who's on the Wellness Committee, and wanted to know about what my thoughts were based on the contract company versus bringing it in ourselves, and whether or not we could look at doing a centralized kitchen to take the food out. One of the biggest things that we experienced as a district when we were doing it our own, when we brought in a contract company is, is the quality of the food and the selection of food was much greater when we brought the contract company and then we tried to provide it our own. Okay, I'm going to the next slide. Okay, here's the land fund. This is, this is the next largest fund that we have. You can see in two thousand eleven, twelve, our bond balance was the two point three million dollars, this year it's ninety-two point two million. So there's a nine hundred thousand dollar transfer that came from the School Plant Facilities Fund into the land fund to reimburse the land fund when they bought the maintenance property on Airfoot Lane. So that was another commitment that the Plant Facilities Lobby Committee made. It said, once the levy passes, we'll refund that money back to the land lottery fund, just like we did the general fund when the general fund funded those expenses too. The thing about the land fund is, is the majority of this money came from direct transfers from the general fund back into the land fund. So in my mind, at some point in time, if we got in a situation, this money could go back to the general fund too, if we decided we were going to purchase land or something like that.
Just on that subject, where do we own big chunks of land? Outcroi? We've got something in Woodside, is that right? Nothing in Woodside, Outcroi is our big chunk? Okay.
And then there's a five or seven acre parcel in Cary?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, here's the IDEA school age, this is a special education fund, so here's the five-year history of the revenues versus expenses. You can see over the course of five years, the general fund is transferring money into this fund to make a hole. This fund is all salaries and benefits. Okay, here is the community campus fund. The five-year projection on that, you can see over the course of the five years, we've supplemented the community campus fund as well from the general fund. So the revenues that come in are the pro-rata expenses coming in from Wayne County Rec District, College of Southern Idaho, Wayne County Drug Coalition, the Pesky Center, Footlight Dance, those, those people that are utilizing those buildings.
Mike, and I'm just assuming that that transfer from the general fund pays for our usage of those facilities as a shared rental agreement?
Yes, it does, that's exactly what it covers. Okay, here's the Title I fund, this is the low-income disadvantaged program targeted for reading programs, it's the same thing. Most of this fund is all, most of this fund is all salaries and benefits. There's a little bit of earmarked funds for the homeless and child blind and things like that, professional development. that, professional development. The reason that this money, this fund is not transferring money from the General Fund this year is because during that reallocation process of reassigning staff, we were reassigning staff, not necessarily because, like, for example, one of the things was Jill Bennet may retire, she was paid out of Title I. So the new position coming in was much less, so that affects the transfer coming in from the General Fund. Okay, the next slide. Here's the Preschool Fund. Now, this isn't the preschool federal fund, this is the preschool fund within our school system itself and the elementary programs. And I believe we've talked about this in the past, the reason that we have this set up as a separate fund is because the State Department of Education told us, when we set this up, to not set it up within the General Fund, because at that point in time, the legislature was looking at precluding school districts from having preschool programs. They didn't believe it, and they said, if you wanna do that, keep it out of the General Fund money, because if they come in with that law, then you'll be penalized, and the state will start withholding funds from you for having it. So, but that's the reason we set up as a separate fund.
So how come the revenues have just, you know, continuously dropped?
The economy in the Valley.
Just people aren't utilizing it, or they need more help?
They need more help. More people are qualified and free.
You've got it. Okay, that makes sense. Yep, okay.
You know, and really, when we set the preschool fund up, it was targeting those low-income families that could not attend a regular daycare program or preschool program. And if you look at that, if you look at this slide, even on the expenses of the 357,000 in 2011, '12, I mean, that tells you that a big portion of that, ninety percent of that, ninety-five percent of that are free and reduced kids that are qualifying for that program. So it still is hitting that target that we set for when we started. Okay, here's all of the other funds that we pay in collective. What I've done is just accumulated all of these into one slide. So we have the Federal Forest Fund, Environmental Education Fund, Academies, apparently, Amazon Fund, Driver Education State Vocational, IDVA Preschool, which is a preschool handicap three- to five-year program. Carl Perkins Federal Vocational Program, Title III, English Language, Title II A, Title III Emergency Immigrant Fund, and the Bus Purchase Fund. And this is what it looks like for the past five years. So you can see, all of these funds, most of the funds are already coming in from the General Fund into these funds, supplementing them as well. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mike, for your presentation, for the thought that you put into it and the excellent information. And I'll go ahead and open it up to the board for any questions. Trustee Baker.
Mike, did the Financial Committee, Advisory Committee exist in developing how this was being presented to us this year?
No, they didn't.
Was that a yes or no?
No.
No, okay. Well, I appreciate the thoroughness of the information and the explanations given, and even the way it was presented, I found it to be very helpful, and to the point on our significant expenses. Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree that. I don't have any specific questions right now on this. It was really helpful to have it presented this way. You know, and I've gone through the more detailed budget that was presented to us with, you know, everything else, but, yeah, this was great. It gives me a better picture about our, where we are with the levy, the levy funds, and also the unappropriate, you know, the balance. I don't know what you call that, the carryover that we have right now, and how that's doing. So we have the carryover fund, then we also have a contingency?
The contingency fund is the carryover fund.
So there isn't two, isn't there something where we always build into the budget, like two point?
Two point, we have two point six million, it's a contingency fund, but since that contingency fund doesn't ever get spent, it goes into the carryover fund the next year.
Oh, so we don't have two point six and carryover a five point seven?
No, it's all included in there.
Okay, I did not understand that. Okay. Okay? So now it's all in one big carryover? Okay. Yeah, right now, I don't have any questions.
Nothing further at this time. Trustee Baker, do you have any further questions at this time?
Not about the presentation, no.
What about the budget?
Can you, I did not receive the agenda. Can you tell me what the other agenda items are?
It was this, and then, it was basically the budget workshop, and then your amended addition.
Okay, so there's nothing else?
As well as public comment at the end.
And public comment, okay. Well, I guess I'd like to go back to, you know, my point earlier regarding our carryover balance, and it's the fact that it's depleted so quickly, and wanting to have a discussion with the board regarding, you know, minimizing incremental costs, or even just new costs, you know, like we discussed earlier regarding, like, position reallocations, get the legislature or the board's thoughts on it.
Trustee Graves?
Do you want me to remind you what they are?
Well, no, I think I know what the new, and Kathy, are you referring to the ten new positions?
Yes. And also, that keeps sort of bringing up the fact that we have an opportunity to convince the local administration with the vacation, with Dan D. resigning as both principal.
Okay. For the public's benefit, the ten positions that they're referring to are a teacher at Wood River Middle School, a teacher at Wood River High School, substance abuse mental health therapist position, secondary teacher for the Substance Abuse Intervention Program, Silver Creek High School social worker, district-wide translator, Haley English Language Teacher, Hemingway English Language Teacher, one teaching position held in reserve, and a school resource officer to be contracted through the city of Haley at Wood River Middle School.
So I guess the question is, is, you know, do we as a board want to ask administration to, you know, reevaluate those positions? And I guess that would be, you know, the discussion, I guess.
Reevaluate those positions or reevaluate all positions?
Or reevaluate all positions?
Additional savings that could be found.
Exactly. Thank you.
Together we got it.
You know, and I guess even not just positions, but maybe, yeah, I don't, I guess that's the biggest expense, would be the positions, the positions and the, I know we've looked at our insurance and we're saving, you know, we're going with a different provider, which is saving us money, so I guess that's, you know, something if we do wanna task administration with that.
And I do have to give a shout-out to the staff in, this is part of the master agreement, but it'll impact all staff, is by modifying the benefits just a little bit under health, we've been able to absorb the increase in the health insurance costs for next year, so.
That's fantastic, because that's been a rising cost of ours for a long time.
It's been out of control.
Yep.
I appreciate being able to have the foresight to push the, an additional supplemental levy out from being out in front of voters in 2012, if I remember correctly from the first of the presentation, to possibly looking at 2017. So we've bought five years' savings currently, and that's due to the fact of a lot of great work done by Mike, by district leadership, as well as cooperation with the association. And we appreciate all those involved in being able to save our taxpayers' money.
Well, I mean, I guess there's no hurt in trying to look at it, you know, for, you know, to be fiscally, can you be fiscally judicious? Fiscally responsible and to look and, you know, see if there are other potential savings.
Mr. Blackman?
So, I don't know, you know, I know it's been vetted, but, so.
Just a question, since the DLT or the district leadership team did work on these reallocations of staffing as a group, are we looking at to eliminate positions at this point? Because we've already looked at reallocation of positions that are needed in the district, so now are we looking at those reallocations for the elimination of some of those positions?
My interpretation, but maybe I'm wrong, is that we're going to relook at it and vet everything one more time to make sure, is there any place else that we can turn? Is that what?
Trustee Baker, I see you waving your flag.
To answer Mr. Blackman's question, I would definitely not want to go into a situation where we're having to risk people, but doing it through attrition and reallocation. But I do feel like it would be pertinent to ensure that, originally, the board gave a request that we didn't want to have an incremental increase in the budget, and when the new positions would happen, it would be through the reallocation. I think that maybe a better directive, especially given the light of this presentation, would be not just to allow for those new requests, just because they were requested and we were able to reallocate, but to really go through and ensure that all of the positions that we have are absolutely necessary, and not just looking at teachers, but our other departments. You know, again, I bring up the fact that we had an administrator resign, so, you know, looking at our administration as well, this would be a timely opportunity to do that. And I don't know that there would be, but I would want to see that that was done in a very thorough manner, to ensure that we are being proven impossible.
Mr. Blackman?
So we've vetted this with the DLT as to what we felt was necess, we've vetted this with the DLT to determine what we felt was necessary for operations. So at this point, I'm looking for some direction from the board as to what we're looking to eliminate from that discussion and vetting at this point. So now if we're looking at eliminating positions under the direction of the board, I'm wondering what, what is it we're supposed to look at? What is it we're supposed to relook at and revet?
Trustee Baker.
Well, this was originally presented to us some time ago, in my recollection, was that the different leaders put in their request of what they wanted, and we were able to fund all those requests for reallocation. Not that they were like a hierarchy where, yeah, I would really like this, but I could do without, kinda thing. And specifically, when you look at the administrative position, I mean, are you guys looking at potentially cutting administration before Dan resigned? I mean, has there been any analysis for that? Because, I mean, unless you guys knew you were doing that New York business, that would be something specifically that could be addressed.
Actually, there was an examination of whether we needed to add an additional assistant principal at the middle school, and because of their fact that their number of teachers, number of students, programming is growing too quickly, approach upon the same as the high school. And we did make the decision not to make that recommendation, but that was a part of the original discussion.
As well as Haley Elementary, there was a discussion?
Yeah, part-time person at Haley, and administrator at Haley, that's true. Thank you for reminding me.
So as I'm hearing, there was additional positions that were desired, but did not make the cut, basically? Mr. Blackman?
So, but now I'm hearing definite direction of order, conversation with the board on definite specific positions that are now completely different from the recommendation coming from your leadership team. So I'm just curious about the direction from the board as to what they're looking to reduce, because I'm hearing now that we want to cut back more administration. And I would just remind the board, that we have cut administration, the previous HR director was not replaced, Katie Palmer's position was reduced, the safety and security officer, Scott Manning, was also cut and not replaced. All our instructional coaches were also cut and not replaced. And so I'm just trying to grapple exactly what the direction is for the revetting of the recommendation already coming from your leadership team.
Trustee Graves?
I think that maybe, I think, and it was a little bit shocking to me and probably shocking to all of us, was that the slide of how our carryover fund is gonna be reduced in two or three years. So I think that was maybe, you know, part of the shock, it's like, oh geez, you know, do we need to, you know, trim things a little bit more? Do we, and I'm not, I don't think, you know, we're talking about eliminating positions, but just taking a relook at things. And maybe, you know, after a relook, it's, okay, you know what, this is what we recommend, this is what we need. It's, I think it's just that slide that.
It's an eye-opener.
An eye-opener, thanks.
It really was.
So I think that was an eye-opener for all of us. I think that's it, I don't.
And I will throw out there too, if we remember our discussions from last night, the board has already not approved one of the positions on that list. As far as the secondary teacher for the Substance Abuse Intervention Program, due to the fact the program didn't pass as presented, and the board decided not to approve that hiring of a position.
Although, now that you bring that up, I, you know, we don't really know what might be recommended this summer, you know, for an additional recommendations for that, for that position. So, you know, I, as a board member, would still like to keep money in the budget, if that's something, you know, that we feel that's needed.
We could certainly take that position and put it into the reserves, and then we would have two positions in reserves.
Right, you know, something like that, because we don't, you know, at this point, you know, how I felt that way about Tuesday night is, okay, we're just gonna take this one step at a time. And I felt that, you know, the hiring of the mental health therapist was a great first step, but I don't want to, you know, close any doors on that one either, is my feeling.
Just going back to the discussion regarding evaluation, I think it's prudent for the board and for the district to start, detail analysis of the necessity of our positions now, so that in two years, when we, if two or three, if we can stretch this a little bit further, when we do have to go back to a supplemental levy, we have shown that we are reducing, we are being reflective on how we're spending right, so that the taxpayers understand that this is an actual necessity, and it's not just because we have more staff than anybody else in the state per people. So, that would be the reason I think that this needs to be done starting now, and continue over the next couple of years in that state and area.
Mr. Chatterton?
You know, and the reason I brought that up is just to bring awareness to it. It's not that I wanna try to alarm anybody or send panic to everybody, and we talked about this in negotiations last week too. It's just an awareness type thing, and it's not that we're waving any red flags saying we've got an issue here. I just want everybody to know that what we're facing in the short-term future, we still have time to address it if we wanna address it at some point. It's not that we have to address it now, but we could address it over the next several years if we want to.
And I think that that is a reflection of what came forward this year. And I think that that is a reflection of what came forward this year in, from all of our administrators on what the requests were for additional positions. Like, you know, last year there was the very long list, and this year, I think, I mean, they're internalizing that and realizing that it's not a Christmas wish list, it's a what do we need to continue operating list. And that's why it was so much easier, I think, this year, is because the administration has that realization, and now everybody else is joining us in that realization.
Okay.
Trustee Baker?
Well, to speak to that point, you know, if we're going to go out and defend these positions to our taxpayers, I believe the statistic on Tuesday was that 40% of high schools have SROs. And we have one, but now we're wanting to add one at our middle school?
No, I think that's...
Is that a necessary to operations?
I believe that statistic was secondary schools, not high schools.
Okay, so we already said 40% of secondary school have SRO students, less than half. And we do have one. So, I mean, those are the kinds of things that I think will be very challenging.
Mr. Blackman?
You received information today from Raul and Alice with current statistics. He was quoting some old ones to you. I would suggest you read through that communication. It's quite in-depth about SRO positions and where the current statistics are.
Do you know that number?
I only know that you got an email, I got CC'd on it. I read through a lot of it, but not completely. It's a very long email with a lot of statistics in it. I did see some of the numbers in there, I couldn't quote them off the top of my head right now.
And I would like to caution the board on, I agree we need to take a look at whatever cost-saving measures that we can come up with as a board. I think that's in our fiduciary duty to do that, but I also think we need to trust our administrators and their processes and the information we get from them as well. I don't think they, I personally do not feel they take those decisions lightly. I do feel they vet those positions, and they do have an understanding of our budget, they do have an understanding of where we are as a district, and they are trying to use a cost-benefit analysis of what do we truly need to serve our students best and what truly is a wish. And I feel that I have that confidence in our administrative team to be able to take a look at those positions and to be able to justify those.
Yeah, I mean, I completely agree. We, you know, we can agree, it's just, you know, looking at it, like I said, it was an alarming number, and I think that's the reason to keep looking at it, so that's...
And I think it definitely behooves the board, like I said, due to Mike's leadership, some board action, the early buyout, the cooperation with our teachers' union, the education association, by not continually just adding positions to the budget, but trying to reduce and reallocate those positions through attrition, we have been able to gain five years, as it stands right now. We're looking and hoping to gain five more. I'm not going to bet on that, but...
They can drop our salaries.
I'll take, I will take a pay cut for my position at this, how's that? But I think it's something... Trustee Baker?
Oh, sorry, Sean, I thought you were done, I apologize. With speaking to Richard Blackman's point about, well, I did read that in detail, the entire thing earlier, and I just reread it, and there were no statistics stated, so I don't know if anybody has any updated information, but to speak to that specific point, but I guess at this point I'm going to ask the board, do we want, do we want to have an evaluation done, or are we going to settle for where we are? What does the board think?
Well, I think upon this discussion, and I think Gwen Carol said that, you know, she'd look at it again.
We could certainly look at it again, we're up against a publishing deadline.
Yep.
But I do want to also just go speak a little bit more to the SRO, because I told you, we had, we wrestled with the administration piece, we know the middle school is competing with the high school for how many kids they can cram in a building and how many programs and everything else that they can do. And one of the pieces that played into going with an SRO rather than an additional administrator was because of the shared values information we got back from the community as a part of all the strategic planning, and how high safety and security showed up on several of those shared values. So that was the reason we said, okay, we'll go this way rather than adding another administrator. So, I don't know if that helps at all, but that at least gives you a little bit more thinking into what we were doing when we were wrestling with, do we dare ask for more administrators?
And in my view, and I guess my opinion is, I trust the vetting process that has already taken place for these positions in the current budget year. I do think it behooves us to look at positions in the future. It definitely behooves us to not just have wish lists, but to really be able to justify those positions. I feel that these positions are justified at this time, and I think we need to strategize as a board and with our business manager on ways that we could extend that levy out into the future even more.
Well, I can't disagree with that. But, you know, I think I can't disagree with that, and if, you know, Gwen Carol, Mike, you want to just, you know, kind of relook at some of this stuff, I think that would be good too.
Trustee Baker, your thoughts?
I agree with Blackman.
As you're looking at it, what direction are you going to give staff so they know where you're coming from?
Well, I think I...
I thought we did.
Yeah, we did that already.
I think she said it.
Okay, okay.
I think it should be done through risk, I think it should be done through reallocation or retirement. I think that it looks through the lens of, you know, the financial situation we're in, as well as, you know, looking at administration with the sudden vacancy that we have to ensure that that vacancy is something that should indeed be filled moving forward. But looking at everything as a whole at Catherine's side, I mean, that would be my suggestion.
Anything further on the budget?
I just want to make the comment, you know, the fear is, is we've never done anything like this as a district. So when we start sending the message, for example, not hiring, rehiring positions through attrition in the future, if we go that way, there's going to be repercussions back from that from the staff, because the assumption is, is class sizes are going to go to 25 to 30 in the elementary school levels, and there's going to be a lot of pushback from that. And, you know, the more we start talking about this, the more that conversation's going to start coming up, just like it did this year.
Well, I do think there's some validity to every position, whether we're in the budget constraints or not, when you have the opportunity to look at it and say, this position is really adding value, or this position is no longer adding value. So I'm okay with doing that. I'm just not quite sure how many people I could look at in the face in our school district and say, you're not adding value, but I do think that that is a legitimate exercise each time that there is a vacancy, and not to just be on autopilot.
Yeah, and I think it's, you know, values of the values of our community as well. You know, we all as a community value, and that should be the lens as well. You know, what do we value as a community? And, you know, our four goals that we have already identified for the strategic plan and whatnot, so I don't think it's... Yeah.
Trustee Baker?
I think we, Dr. Holmes stated that very well. I think that that's something pertinent that we should always be doing, and I think that's exactly what I'm asking for, is what she just said. And I don't want to imply that I'm expecting to have significant changes coming back. I'm just asking for a look and a report back, and there may not be any changes or recommendations, but I just think it's an important exercise, as Dr. Holmes said, so thank you for that.
Any further budget discussion? With that, we'll go ahead and move on to the as amended agenda and revisit the survey to the board regarding the, or survey from the board regarding the strategic plan, and open that up for discussion.
I guess I'll start with it. Sean and Catherine, do you have the nail that this board decision was already Gwen Carol today from myself?
No.
I can go out and make copies of that, it was actually, I didn't know that was going to be...
I have not seen it.
And, Trustee Baker, while I'm thinking of it, you keep sending things to my Hotmail account, so if I'm slow in responding, it's because I haven't been shopping online lately and looking at my Hotmail account.
That's probably a good thing.
Sometimes we're like, oh no, how long has that been there?
Okay.
I used to do that with the school board account.
Thank you very much, you know that, because I would want to write that.
Ms. Kaufman, we'll get those copies made real quick so we can have this discussion. Would you like to give us some background and any information while she's doing that?
Well, basically, just kind of took what Gwen Carol started with and tried to make it as simple and straightforward as possible. And really, the goal with this, in my mind, is to inform us as to, it's kind of a temperature check, how are we doing? And what can we do moving forward to ensure that we have buy-in into the strategic plan that comes out of this? That we've done our due diligence to make sure that it reflects the values of our community, educational values of our community. And, you know, more specifically, how can we ensure that what we're doing moving forward, you know, we take the feedback and adjust as necessary and keep the ball moving, so that we have a great outcome. So, I mean, that was the one I was looking through and what I kind of put together. And I just want to get the board's feedback on what's there and see if we can, I mean, I don't think we need to detail wordsmith it, but if we get the general gist of questions as to what kind of information we want to know of the board, then we can let, you know, the experts wordsmith it later. And it's really just, it's nine questions, but two of them are just kind of who are you? And then the others are pretty straightforward.
If I could start just on the first question there, you're, we're asking which best represents, and I've found, we've tried that kind of question before, and it's hard for many of our, because first of all, are you a teacher, a staff member, or administrator? We're all staffs. And then the, are you a parent? So I think we ought to allow more than one choice there if we could, because our poor teachers are like, am I a teacher or am I a parent? And they're both.
Yeah, I think it's, the survey is good, I think it's just good to check in.
Do you mind if I look at that while?
This year, we're about three-quarters of the way through the process, two-thirds, but from what I understand, this process is going to continue next year, and so, you know, why not do a check-in for moving forward? And if, you know, there's any adjustments or that we may need to do, or not, do a check-in. Yeah, why not?
Dr. Holmes, are there any other comments? I appreciate your feedback on question one, I would agree with you. Are there any other suggestions or questions concerned?
Yeah, number four, I think, is unclear unless you've been immersed in it like we have, has the process, and then going to say what process. So when you've attended a meeting, was your role clear or something to like that? Because, and then also on number seven, it says if you participated on the strategic plan steering committee, something to affect of where your, were you able to share your ideas and educational values? And the steering committee's role was to take what came back on the surveys and synthesize it into goals and stuff they weren't to, it wasn't that they were putting forth, Wesley's sitting here shaking his head in case you can't hear it. It was to put your ideas, it wasn't to put your ideas forward, it was to take what the community gave us and synthesize it into something like that.
Oh yeah, I did see that one, I just had it skated.
So would your recommendation be to take out the steering committee portion of that question?
Yeah, that's why in the original one that I sent you, I had a question specific to the strategic steering committee, you know, did you feel like that the things that rose to the top were what was, went forward? You know, did they honor their part of the commitment?
And I, as a member of the steering committee, I would definitely agree with that. That was made abundantly clear at the first, and as we as a board chose steering committee members, that the steering committee was not an avenue for a special voice, that their voices were still wanted to be included, but their role is to include those voices through the participation in the community strategic planning sessions, rather than through bringing their ideas through that steering committee, and that that steering committee had the responsibility of basically just, the workload of disseminating the information and seeing the things that rose to the top.
Right. So that could be reworked.
Well, yeah. So one suggestion, since the subcommittee is a pretty select group, would be to eliminate question seven, and just directly, directly request that feedback from the subcommittee, rather than putting it in a survey to all, since it's a small group, it'd be to just eliminate question seven completely.
Yeah, I think that...
And then, and then like I said, just ask the subcommittee that question and have them get that feedback, so that we can ensure that that subcommittee is the most efficient and, you know, best committee it can be. And then going back to question four, I think, I do like Dr. Holmes' suggestion to have the process, that's a little vague, so I think something along that, I think maybe she said, her participation in the strategic planning process, including your role, or strategic planning process, including your role in the process, been cleared? Maybe, is that what you were getting at, or can you repeat what you said?
Well, I had, but I think I can improve on that. Let's try this. How about have you, has it been clear to you how to participate in the strategic planning process? Is that what we're getting at? Because then we don't have to worry about, were they at a meeting, were they participating in a survey, just did they know how to participate?
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be efficient.
I think we should do that later.
Okay. All right, I have one more question. Question nine is not about the process, so can you help me understand why question nine is there?
I think that if you have a very captive audience that is engaged in what the district's doing, and it's a great opportunity for them to just kind of give us some feedback, and this actually kind of came out of the last strategic plan, this was something that was a key stone of, one of the key questions that was from that, is my understanding. So I just felt like it was an opportunity to maybe inform the subcommittee, since it's such a small group, and how they could best achieve the four goals that we have based on some of the feedbacks that might come out of that question. I don't know if Catherine or Sean... I don't know, Catherine, Ashan, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Do you want to say in there, how do you think the school district could inspire, engage, educate, and empower, since that's what we're working on? And list three things in order of priority?
I think that's a good idea. Wouldn't you just add that to the end of the question?
Yeah, you could just add, just say, what do you think would-
Or add, to inspire your education to all children by, and then put the four actions, inspiring or action, engage, put those four things.
Or at the beginning, what do you think would inspire, engage, educate?
Others are wordsmithers.
Okay. Inspire, engage-
Yeah.
To make an extraordinary education. You could add, just add that into the second part.
Other and Karen are the wordsmithers, so.
My, my thought is, is on question eight, which is about the timeline, because we have an August first.
Well, we have an August first deadline and we have a July new board.
Right.
Potentially. And so, going into it, we were, we were fully aware that it was going to be a crunch timeline.
Right. So, I just, I, I'm not sure if that question is appropriate.
If the general public has any knowledge.
And I would agree with that. We as a board-
I would go eliminate it.
I would, I would just remove question eight because we have, you know, we have to have the mission, we've got to have the goals, we've got to have the objectives. We don't have to have everything perfect in the strategies. And it sounds like we're not getting, you know, we're not going to come up with specific things as strategies. And that's going to be worked on next year. And maybe that's where question nine can funnel in some things. So, I would, I would take out eight though, because I don't think we had a choice in that to make us, you know, we had to be a speedy process.
And I would agree with that statement.
And while we're talking about-
I would agree with that.
I just want to, every time I get the chance, say, you know, strategic planning is nothing but continuous improvement and it's an ongoing process. So, really trying to change everybody's mindset from this is something we do and then we put it away to this is just the way we live life. So, all sort of-
No, I think it's good to have those reminders about what strategic planning is because a lot of us don't-
Don't live in this world?
Lived it, you know, done a lot of strategic planning. I know Wesley has, I know other people have in the, have in the valley, but.
All right. Is there any further comments on the survey? Trustee Baker?
Well, I just appreciate the board's input and Dr. Holmes' input as well. And I think that it will be a great tool for the board to use as well as the committees to make it a wonderful strategic plan. Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, I have received one public comment request and we'll go ahead and open that portion of the meeting and start with Sheila. And I apologize, I'm going to butcher your name, last name, Nash. If you wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind using a microphone at least, please?
So, I'm Sheila Nash, I'm from the middle school. And first of all, I'd like to just start by thanking the board for listening to our concerns about the budget cut for the environmental fund and inquiring. And I'd like to try and give a little more information. I know, obviously, the budget is a very complicated and involved situation here. And so, I'd like to ask that they, if they're going back to look at the budget, that they also examine the cuts to our environmental fund and to the teachers' extra duty pay. Our program, as we mentioned the other night, is truly unique. And I heard a lot of talk today about community values and what the community looks for and wants in their education. And I think that the bonds that are made between high school students and younger kids, the stewardship that we teach our students, and that is all a huge part of education in Wayne County. And the history of our program, it started a lot, four years ago, when the administration ran the program. And when it became too difficult to organize, the administration gave it to the teachers and compensated them for their efforts in organizing. We take over two hundred and forty kids up there in two different sessions. The first time, we take a hundred and twenty. And in the last couple of years, since we've gone to the International Bachelorette Program, we not only organized the hundred and twenty that we have up at Cathedral Pines, but we also have to organize what the other hundred and twenty are doing back at school. And I heard, also heard a lot of talk about equality lately and making things equal among teachers. And it's interesting, because we've been teaching a unit in our classroom about how equality doesn't always equate to fairness. Making everything equal is marked markedly different from things being fair. And fairness is described as being impartial and following what is right and proper. And I, I really think that when you're asking teachers to chaperone all these students overnight and for a week, that it should be compensated. It's the beginning of the year and it's a huge commitment. And I think all, all the teachers, the trade teachers truly believe in this program. That's why we're here fighting for it. And I think that the budget cut that we found in the, you know, when we found that our pay was being cut and we went to our principal about it, he didn't even really know about it. So, I'd just like to ask that, first of all, say thank you and also ask if you do relook at the budget, if you would look at that aspect of the budget for us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Have not received any other comment requests. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment at this time? Ms. Browning, if you would, go ahead.
I want very quick.
Is there anyone else?
All done.
Wait for the mic, please. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Just one quick question regarding this comment. What kind of money are we talking for that?
Well, teacher, the teacher extra duty pay is, I think it's normally around $700 for the teachers, but it varies depending on do they, the teacher go, does the teacher go both sessions? Do they go one session? And how involved are they in the organization? I know that the stipends haven't been raised in probably 20 years or the extra duty pay, however you want to word it. But that, that portion of it has been cut from the budget, so.
Seven hundred dollars per teacher for the entire program? Two sessions for that per session?
This is a great discussion, but it's a comment, not a discussion.
Well, I need to make an intelligent comment and I can't do that until I'm informed. So, $700 total?
Yes, for both sessions.
Any comment?
Why? Why does it cut?
As a reminder, as for our public comment procedures, during public comment, we refrain from entering into a dialogue. We accept comments, we do not begin dialogue. If you would like to ask questions offline outside of the board meeting, we're happy to talk.
And Mr. Blackman can help you.
Hey, you want to read this? This is one of my three emails. It's the Federal Labor Standards Act.
Well, you can talk about it later because we're not recording now.
Okay.
Just talk to Mr. Blackman, he can help you.
Any?
If I have further questions about the public comment, who should I refer those to of hours spent on Rose, you know, additional hours besides the overnight?
You can refer them to me and I'll have the appropriate person respond.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Saying no further public comment, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Alex Beckenin?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.